This is the reorganizational meeting of the Board of Education. If we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have just come from executive session. We did not adjourn our executive session. We're going to go back for just a little bit more business after this meeting. And we are going to start. Lauren, you're going to start?
With nominations for the Board President. Are there any motions?
I'll nominate Michelle Lissio.
Any other nominations?
My second.
Any other nominations? All in favor? Now we go to the other office.
Let's be after me. I'm Michelle Lissio.
I'm Michelle Lissio.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of President.
The duties of President.
For the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
For the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
Town of Eastchester.
Town of Eastchester.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay. But then you're going to sign there. Do you want to do the Vice President?
You can do that.
Okay.
I can do an updating.
Okay. Now we'll take nominations for the Board Vice President. Any nominations?
I'll nominate Cynthia Teague.
Any other nominations?
I'll second.
Any other? All in favor?
Okay. After me. I Cynthia Teague.
I Cynthia Teague.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Vice President.
The duties of Vice President.
For the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
For the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
Town of Eastchester.
Town of Eastchester.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby appoints Lauren Zagorsky-Truel to the position of district clerk to serve at the pleasure of the Board for the 2019-20 school year at an annual rate of pay of $11,410. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Okay. Repeat after me.
I Lauren Zagorsky-Truel.
I Lauren Zagorsky-Truel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk.
For the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
For the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
Town of Eastchester.
Town of Eastchester.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Lauren. And thank you, Lauren, for all your hard work with the Board. It's very much appreciated. Okay, we'll move on to appoint a district treasurer. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby appoints Lindsay Rose to the position of treasurer to serve at the pleasure of the Board for the 2019-20 school year. Is there a motion? Laura, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Okay, and Lauren, you're going to swear her in tomorrow, correct? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, number six. Appoint a claims auditor. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby appoints Michael Oliveri to the position of claims auditor to serve at the pleasure of the Board for the 2019-20 school year at the annual rate of pay of $10,790. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Okay, we're now going to move on to comments of the Board. I know that we have a very lengthy agenda at the reorg meeting, so if there's anything that anyone wanted to quickly add or don't want to take away any time from anyone, we're going to go ahead. We're going to forward. Okay, I just want to take one minute. It is the beginning of our school year. While the kids don't come back until September, we are here with the rest of our administrative and support staff really doing the busy work of the school. I want to welcome our two newest Board members, Therese Gardier and Laura Benke, and I want to congratulate you and thank you for serving. And we welcome you and we look forward to a year ahead. I also want to thank our returning Board members again, our Trust Pete and Cynthia, and as everyone knows, we do talk about this often. It is a lot of work and dedication, and I thank you for serving. I do want to just say, and I know that Carl will speak about it also, it's a very exciting time of year here, but more so this year with the groundbreaking ceremony of our Capitol Project, and as promised, we have delivered that the day right after school, the very first day, day one, there was a lot of activity happening here. We gathered for a groundbreaking ceremony, and it was really exciting to see all the movement and activity and how quickly things were going along. So while it's very exciting, and Carl did send, and I thank you for that, a memo out to the school community to please stay away from Cywinoy Boulevard, and while it's very exciting to come and see what's going on, it really is a heavy-duty construction zone. So please be very, very careful when you are traveling around the school district, and please stay away, really, as curious as we all are, and Carl will continue to update us over, you know, as things progress. So it is very exciting, and we are very happy about that. And was there anything else you wanted to add? Carl?
No, I would just say that it's worth repeating. We did do a communication to parents. We've noticed a lot of our students riding their bicycles, walking past. They are curious, and they should be curious. It's very exciting. However, we have heavy equipment and trucks moving in and out regularly all day long, and I just want to strongly emphasize if parents could remind their children when they go out in the neighborhood that really you ought to keep a safe distance from both school buildings. So as Michelle pointed out, we hit the ground running last week. We are on schedule. We are also on budget, and we're very excited about the project. Not only is Coddle in full swing and the second-story frame is up, but we have started on the high school turf field replacement as well as other infrastructure. So again, if you could encourage your students to keep a safe distance, we appreciate that. We welcome them. In September, they will see all the exciting changes at that point. A couple of other things. I just want to give a sincere congratulation once again to all the graduates and all the staff who worked so hard to put together amazing commencement ceremonies at each and every school. They were just beautifully done, and we're so proud of our students. Some of them came back. We have a handful that are working with us. Most of the workers are professional construction workers, but we have some students helping us out this summer. We are so proud of them, and they did beautifully at the end of the year. One other thing that is definitely worth mentioning, I received a letter in the mail yesterday, and I'd like to read it to you. June 14th, from the Commissioner, I'm sorry, the Assistant Commissioner of Education. Dear Superintendent, on behalf of Commissioner Aliya and the Board of Regions, I write to congratulate you on your district having a school that has been designated as a recognition school. This school is among those in New York State that have high academic achievement, growth, and a graduation rate, and have made progress during the 1718 school year. Encloses a certificate that celebrates the success of your district in supporting educational excellence. And that's signed by the Assistant Commissioner of Education. This is the certificate. I'll just pass it around. And it also added good news. It looks like we also received that designation for a high school for this past school year. So it's a rigorous process. I'll share the data with the Board by which we receive a designation like this, but it is something that we can all be very proud of. I congratulate, of course, the teachers and the staff, the administrative team, and of course, the Board for supporting our education and our initiatives here. So that is my good news for the evening.
Very good news.
Can I turn it over to Michelle?
If I could just add also about graduation, and again, congratulations to all. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend all of the ceremonies. I will say, really, could not be more proud of our students and the way that they present themselves, the public speaking, their participation. I will say, in Coddle, in kindergarten and in fifth grade, to see every student sing and to be, to stand so strong and confident, it was really, really so wonderful and such, you know, to end the year with that sense of, every class this year, I don't know what it was, but you could really sense a feeling of friendship amongst the classes. I would say particularly in the eighth-grade class, I just felt like the kids just really seemed so supportive of one another, and the talent amongst them, and the way that our building principals, the ceremonies that they put on that highlighted their talent, I just really thought was wonderful and just really a wonderful way to end the year. So it was really very, very good, and congratulations to the students and all the parents for that great accomplishment. Okay. Let's see, where are we now? Lee, any comments?
No, I would just echo what Carl had said, that we're rolling along full steam ahead on the construction project as well as in both buildings. We're also working on awarding a bid for the boiler replacement, and I'll have some more information for the Board in the next week or so on that as well. And we're trying to do as much as possible, and it looks like we're all on schedule. So it's good news.
Great, thank you. Okay, this is now the first recognition of the audience. If anyone would like to recognize, to be recognized for agenda items. Anything? No. Okay, we are now going to move on to the consent agenda, and this is also reorganizational agenda. Approve the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda items 2 through 50. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Laura, discussion. Okay, it's very lengthy for the new members. A lot of this is standard and things that we do year after year, but if there's anything in there, then anyone has any questions on or anyone would like to pull anything out for a separate vote, you do have that opportunity. Again, we have been in receipt of the agenda ahead of time, so we have had a chance to look over it. Anything, anyone?
The only one was, isn't it, I was looking for now, is this where the insurance?
Oh, right, but the rate had changed.
Insurance contract rate changed? Is it?
Is that a separate item?
I believe it's in this section.
It's in this section, right? So many things in here.
Yeah, number 37.
Number 37. Yeah, so can you just, could somebody just maybe explain why that premium has gone up so much?
That was based on our experience as a district, I believe, because we have more sports and more claims against the policy for any student who might have been injured in school, at sports or in school as well. We have full coverage for any out-of-pocket expenses that, medical expenses that might be incurred by the family of the student. And our insurance broker did check with other student accident insurance companies but got similar rates. So that just appears to be the increase due to our experience.
So is it true that we've had an increase of sports activities and claims? Is that a commensurate?
Right, yeah. So I don't know how the numbers compare year over year, but that is the increase in cost. We have options if we wanted to reduce the coverage, but this is the cost to keep the coverage the same as it's been in previous years, which is full coverage of every out-of-
So for keeping the same coverage, it's just an increased cost?
A premium went up, but we are keeping the coverage exactly the same.
And it is just for one year, so we can readdress it, look at it again next year?
That's correct.
If anything changes. Okay. I also wanted to add just number 47, which is the summer curriculum work, and I just want to just recognize all the teachers who are working over the summer and who are continuing to learn themselves, and I would say over the last, you know, two, three years, to see an increase in this kind of work, I very much appreciate it. So thank you, Ellen. I know you coordinate a lot of that, and thank you to the teachers for taking that on over the summer.
Yeah, I actually want, I was going to say the same thing. I was happy to see a lot of things on here around curriculum. And I was just wanting, like with math, I notice, are we changing some things because it, both for sixth and seventh grade, I notice, so there's like, is there something new going to happen with curriculum or no? Just out of curiosity.
For sixth grade, they're getting their math lab back, and so we need to put some thoughtful mind around that as to what that's really going to look like and what can we partition into the math lab time versus, you know, the regular class time. And in seventh grade, seventh grade really hasn't been a focus. We haven't done a project on it since Common Core came on, and the teacher involved said, you know, that I'd like to really look at this and look at some options of resources. And we have a seventh accelerated program, as you know, and really then working on, this one is going to be mostly on the seventh accelerated class and really detailing out what do we really need to make sure that we're preparing kids for algebra in eighth grade.
That's great. Thank you. Okay. All in favor? Okay, we'll move on now to business of the Board, and to think we used to read all of that. Okay. Number one. Adopt amended policy. Resolve to adopt amended policy 1500 use of facilities. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, discussion. Pete, do you want to discuss that a little bit?
Sure, so this is, I guess we've read it three times already or discussed it. So just for those that aren't familiar with it and the new Board members as well, Cynthia and I last year took a look at policy 1500 to see if we could update it and make some additions to it or changes to it. This is the public use of school facilities policy, and we did wind up making some changes and amendments to it. Nothing really all that substantive. Most of it is still pretty much the same. The biggest change we made or proposed is to more clearly define the types of organizations that get to use our facilities without a cost. So we actually cleared, the previous policy or the existing policy that we're looking to change left it entirely up to the superintendent's discretion. We thought that just due to perceptions in the community, it may be good to actually define that a little more, so we did that. And then we also made some other changes with respect to how applications are submitted, now they're submitted digitally versus electronically versus, I guess, paper submission, what it used to be. We also added some more requirements for demonstrating proof of being a charitable organization, if you're claiming that. And we also added some changes, what was the other thing we added, Cynthia? What was the other stuff that we did? I'm forgetting now.
I don't think there was anything else added. Cleaning up language.
Yeah, we cleaned up, our lawyers cleaned up a lot of the language. We also, that's right, we also made the weekend time of use for the field consistent on both fields. It was just, we had a set time for just the high school. We didn't, we didn't have a for Coddle, so we leveled that out. And that's pretty much it. Other than that, it's pretty much the same. So, yeah, that's it.
One thing, I did have one resident who contacted me with a couple of questions. What about in terms of if you don't follow, like if you?
Oh, good point, yeah. So that was the other thing we did. We did try to add some teeth to this policy with regards to folks that use our facilities and don't treat the facilities properly. So what we did was we put in the policy that there's going to be a list of rules, facility rules, that the, that the school will put out. We didn't want to spell those rules in the policy so that the rules can be changed and amended easily, but we did cite that there will be a list of rules that have to be followed. If they're not followed, then as per this policy, you could lose your rights to using our facilities. So we tried to put a little more teeth into that.
Okay. Is there a fine?
Still, no, there's no fine. It's just, the repercussions of not following those rules would be your loss of privileges to use a facility.
Who's enforcing that? Who's going to be enforcing that?
Enforcing the policy?
Yeah.
Well, the Board enforces the policy.
No, I mean, not necessarily the policy, but facilities. So who oversees when you request it? The athletic directors oversees who's, the requests are being sent to and?
The athletic director is in charge of the submissions for use, and I think that he's designated that to someone else, but ultimately, the person in charge is the athletic director.
That would be for the athletic fields, but for the facilities in general, for the building, that would be the business office. Under me.
Right. So for athletic fields, athletic director for everything else would be Lee.
And then one other point that was brought up to me was regarding security of the field. And I know that's not something that's in the policy, but something that I think we're going to have to address in some way, especially as we're making this million-dollar investment on our turf field, and in terms of when the gates are open, when the gates are closed, really overall security of the facility. And I think, you know, what happens many times is it's left to the neighbors to bring to our attention if the gates are left open and things like that. So I really think that we need to take a look at, and if it means developing some type of structure or policy or procedure of protecting our facility, then we need to do that, because right now I think there's just a few gaps in there that are allowing for some misuse and, you know, I just think we really need to protect our asset in a better way than we have. And, I mean, it's hard. We're not, no one's here on the weekends, you know, or at nighttime, so, but we have to figure out how to do something, and I'm not sure what the answer is.
And there have been discussions on that, so we will continue to update the Board on that as well.
Okay, good. Very good, great. Okay, so then, all in favor of the amended policy? And thank you, Pete, Cynthia, for your work on that. Number two, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve an agreement with Home Care Therapies LLC doing business as Horizon Healthcare Staffing for the 2019-20 school year for substitute nurse services at a rate of $56 an hour for RNs and $43 an hour for LPNs, not to exceed $50,000. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Laura, discussion. All in favor? Number three, appoint a school attorney. Resolve to appoint Keenan Bean as Board Attorney for the 2019-20 school year for retainer fee of $65,000 for general counsel work and a retainer fee of $27,000 for negotiation services. Anytime spent on matters that fall outside either retainer arrangement will be billed at $225 per hour for the services performed by attorneys and $125 per hour for services performed by paralegals. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Therese, discussion. All in favor? Number four, approve pupil personnel agreements. Resolve to approve the service agreements A through I below. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, discussion. I see Joe, Mr. Spatola's here. Is there anything here we need to, any of these services, or are these just standard agreements?
Yeah.
They're all standard, okay.
Most of these service providers, we've worked with before, there's consultants in there, and they help us to meet IEP requirements. There's some home services, some in-school services, and some consultation from professional staff.
And just for the new Board members, last year, we, in the beginning of last year, had decided to group together service agreements, group together personnel. We will discuss that when we have our train and if there's changes we want to make to it, but just so that they know. And what we had said was at the time, if there's something in there, in that group that is, you know, something important or a new program or something that we'd like to discuss and explain, then they would be highlighted at that time. Otherwise, we would vote on them in a block. All in favor? Number five, approve side letters. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the side letters of agreement dated June 12, 2019, binding between the district and the Tuckahoe Teachers Association, and authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Is there a motion? Therese, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Number six, approve a side letter. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves a side letter agreement dated June 14, 2019, binding between the district and the Tuckahoe Teachers Association, and authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Number seven, approve a side letter. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the side letter of agreement dated June 21, 2019, binding between the district and the Tuckahoe Teachers Association, and authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Is there a motion? Therese, second. Laura, discussion. If I can just ask one thing, because we don't have, I don't have in front of me our board notes, so I'm not sure which one of these side letters, I think, discuss the, there's two programs. One was for the training.
Curriculum liaison.
Yes, yes. Could we talk about, because I think that's good stuff, and we should talk about that publicly.
Let's invite Dr. McDonald.
Sure. Two curriculum liaisons. So one of the positions is our writing curriculum liaisons that we have been doing for the past two, three years, and we, since we still haven't put it into a, you know, a final version of a contract, we still need to do a side agreement to keep that going. And the new one is social and emotional learning curriculum liaison. So we have posted the position, and we are creating two teams, one for elementary and one for secondary, that are going together as teacher leaders, and there's one administrator on the group, there's one clinician on the group, a psychologist, and then teachers, you know, fill out that team that are going to be working directly with the Yale Institute for emotional health. They're coming to, actually Putnam Northern Westminster Bosse's hosts it, and learning about the ruler method of how, it's just one method of talking about social and emotional health. And they will then be turning and coming back and working directly with our staff this whole first year, aligning with our social and emotional learning goal in our strategic plan is about raising the capacity of our adults, all adults in the building, all employees, and so that we can have a common language, so we can see what we're seeing in children and know that we know how to turn them to good resources and how to develop good lessons around social and emotional learning. So we're really excited about the interest that our staff has in serving on these teams to go learn and then be those trainers back in our buildings for the rest of our staff. So it's your one of that initiative.
And what is the selection process? Is it, you said they were posted and then?
Right, so any position that we have that is a TTA contractual position, and these are, because, you know, assuming that, I don't know which one of these is the one you haven't voted on yet, so I'm not sure either which one's which, then they've already been posted because the agreement was signed by the TTA in understanding that this would be the compensation that we would give in the anticipated number of hours. And so in consultation with our administrative team, we will develop then who that team of five is for each. Again, it'll have an administrator, a clinician typically, it can be a guidance counselor or a psychologist, and then three teacher leaders from the building that the administrators really believe, yeah, they're the ones who can be heard and listen, and people are going to invest in what they learn and come back with.
That's great. That's good stuff. Thank you. All in favor? Okay.
Thank you. We're excited.
Thank you. We're excited.
Number eight, accept donations. Whereas the Toccoha Union Free School District has informed of donations to be made to the district and whereas the district would like to accept such donations, it is hereby resolved that the district shall accept the donations from the PTA in the amount of $150 for the use for STEM Innovation Lab at W.E. Cottle School, $200 for flowers for the Toccoha Middle School graduation, and $5,100 in grant awards to the district's art and music teachers. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Teraz, discussion. Thank you to the PTA. All in favor? Number nine, summer transportation contract. Resolve to approve a summer transportation contract with Royal Coach Lines for the period July 1, 2019 through August 30, 2019, at a total anticipated annual cost of $42,460.69. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Laura, discussion. All in favor? Number 10, award a bid. Resolve to accept the lowest responsible bid for electrical services for the 2019-20 school year from Scotty Electric Corp., 4 Halls Terrace, South Yonkers, New York. Is there a motion? Teraz, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Number 11, award a bid. Resolve to accept the lowest responsible bid for facilities management services for the 2019-20 school year from A&amp;A Maintenance Enterprise, Inc. Is there a motion? Laura, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Number 12, award a bid. Resolve to accept the lowest responsible bid for air conditioning services for the 2019-20 20 school year from John Henry's Heating Ventilating Air Conditioning, Inc., 4 Hick Street, North Lindenhurst, New York. Is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Teraz, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Number 13, extend a bid. Whereas on or about June 12, 2018, Toccoha Union Free School District solicited bids proposals for electrical services and whereas on July 9, 2018, the Board of Education of the Toccoha Union Free School District awarded a contract for snow removal services to JMA Landscaping, Inc., 84 Park Drive, East Chester, New York, for the 2018-19 school year, whereas the Board of Education has determined that it is the best interest of the school district to extend its contract with JMA Landscaping for snow removal services for additional one-year period from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020 at the same compensation. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education approves and authorizes the extension of the school district's contract with JMA Landscaping, Inc. of 84 Park Drive, East Chester, New York, for snow removal services for an additional one-year period from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020 at the same compensation as the prior year. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute on behalf of the school district the contract with JMA Landscaping, Inc., 84 Park Drive, East Chester, New York, for snow removal services. And be it further resolved that the President of the Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools, and the officers and administrators of the school district are authorized and directed to take all actions necessary to affect the purposes of this resolution and to cause compliance with the contract with JMA Landscaping, Inc. for snow removal services. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Laura, discussion. All in favor? Number 14, extend a bid. Whereas on or about January 28, 2019, Toccoha Union Free School District solicited bids proposals for painting services and whereas on February 11, 2019, the Board of Education of the Toccoha Union Free School District awarded a contract for the painting services to Mohegan Park Contracting, Inc. of New Rochelle, New York, for the 2018-19 school year, whereas the Board of Education has determined that it is best interest of the school district to extend its contract with Mohegan Park Contracting, Inc. of New Rochelle, New York, for painting services for additional one-year period from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020 at the same compensation. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education approves and authorizes the extension of the school district's contract with Mohegan Park Contracting of New Rochelle, New York, for painting services for an additional one-year period from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020 at the same compensation as the prior year. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute on behalf of the school district the contract with Mohegan Park Contracting, Inc. of New Rochelle, New York, for painting services. And be it further resolved that the President of the Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools, and the officers and administrators of the school district are authorized and directed to take all actions necessary to affect the purposes of this resolution and to cause compliance with the contract with Mohegan Park Contracting, Inc. of New Rochelle, New York, for painting services. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Okay, we move on to number 15, extend a bid. Whereas on or about January 28, 2019, Toccoha Union Free School District solicited bids proposals for minor repair services and whereas on February 11, 2019, the Board of Education of the Toccoha Union Free School District awarded a contract for minor repairs services to Mohegan Park Contracting, Inc. of New Rochelle, New York, for the 2018-19 school year, whereas the Board of Education has determined that in its best, that it is in its best interest of the school district to extend its contract with Mohegan Park Contracting, Inc. of New Rochelle, New York, for minor repair services for additional one-year period from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020 at the same compensation. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education approves and authorizes the extension of the school district's contract with Mohegan Park Contracting, Inc. of New Rochelle, New York, for minor repair services for additional one-year period from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020 at the same compensation as the prior year. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute on behalf of the school district the contract with Mohegan Park Contracting, Inc. of New Rochelle, New York, for minor repair services. And be it further resolved that the President of the Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools, and the officers and administrators of the school district are authorized and directed to take all actions necessary to affect the purposes of this resolution and to cause compliance with the contract with Mohegan Park Contracting, Inc. of New Rochelle, New York, for minor repair services. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Laura, discussion. So Lee, these are contractors that we've used this year and you're happy with and that's at the same compensation, so it's all good.
No change in price.
All, all in favor? Okay, we now move on to personnel. Number one, personnel recommendations. Resolve to approve personnel action items A through L below. Is there a motion? First, we need a motion. There's no motion. Laura, second. Pete, discussion. Okay, we are going to ask that a few items, A through, in A through L, be tabled at this time for our next meeting, which hopefully will be in the next week or so. And they are... C, appoint a guidance counselor. K, appoint a teacher. And...
J.
Approve additional days. Lauren.
So I would start with, if we can table until the next year, do motion to table C, K, and J to the next meeting, and then I would do another resolution that says motion to approve-
What's left?
A through L.
With the exception.
Except C.
Okay. Okay, so now is there a motion to table items C, J, and K from the personnel agenda? Teraz, second. Pete. All in favor? Discussion, I'm sorry. All in favor? Okay. And is there a motion to approve A through L of the personnel agenda with the exception of C, J, and K? Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Okay.
Sorry, I didn't say it in discussion, but obviously we can't discuss personnel, but I think we should just maybe just say that the, really, we just want more information.
We're looking for additional information.
Those items that we asked to be tabled, it's not a no, it's just we're asking for more information that we weren't able to get today. So that's, that's, that's the reason for it.
Correct, thank you. So now we're going to move on to the second recognition of the audience. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Okay, we are not going to adjourn at this time because we are going back into executive session and we will, normally in the summer, we have a scheduled meeting in July, we have another one in August, but we will have to be doing some business over the next few weeks, so we will be posting another meeting and that will go out, Lauren will put it out on an email and we will post that meeting, so everyone, please stay tuned for that. Okay, thank you and have an enjoyable summer. Thank you. This is great.